A lot of air. Said that sure moves a lot of air.
I'm gonna call this meeting of the Rundle Planning Board to order. Today is October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one. It is seven P M. And we are in the municipal meeting room. We have approval of the agenda, approval of minutes for October fifth, two thousand twenty-one, and then sitwalk minutes for July sixth, August sixteenth, and August seventeenth of two thousand twenty-one. We have public comment. We have one application in front of us tonight. That is Cape Rundle Cottage Preserve LLC, a subdivision, conditional use amendment sketch plan. Then we have a planner's report. And then we'll adjourn and go home. Maybe. I need a motion for the agenda.
Yeah.
Second. Motion was made by Marty, seconded by Tom. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
Any opposed? And before I forget it, we need a roll call, starting with Marty.
Marty.
Susan Senate.
Tom McGinn.
Paul Green.
Rich Canong. And we have Lee J. Feldman, Town Planner. Down at the end. Okay. Approval of the minutes of October fifth.
Make a motion.
Yeah.
Motion was made by Paul Green, seconded by Marty. Is there any discussion?
I'll need to.
Tom, you gonna abstain?
Abstain from this.
Okay.
I have a question. So I can accept the minutes, but we weren't part of voting and part of the situation. Are we abstaining or can we accept them as written as well?
No, you would accept the minutes.
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor?
Yeah.
Aye.
One abstain.
Four in favor, one abstention. Sightwalks. First sightwalk was on July sixth. Gothbrook subdivision. Oh, good.
I don't think I was there.
According to this, you were there.
Okay. I don't remember.
He wasn't there.
You weren't there, Marty.
No, he wasn't there.
That's my fault because I thought you were.
He wasn't there that day.
Okay, so we'll take you off.
I make a motion. We accept the minutes as corrected for Mr. Caden.
I'll second that.
Motion was made by Paul Green, seconded by Tom McGinn. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstention.
Okay. Four in favor, one abstention. Next one is August sixteenth, the Holy Donut. Okay, you were at that one, right, Marty?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll make a motion. We accept the minutes.
Motion was made by Paul, seconded by Susan. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. The last one is Oak Ridge Terrace Two, August seventeenth, two thousand twenty-one.
We accept as written?
Tom, I think we're gonna have to postpone this.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, there's only two. There's only two of us that were there, so we'll have to table these until the next meeting.
I was there as a town member, not as a board member.
No. Question.
Yeah, Marty.
As you said before, they can improve as written.
I would abstain.
But this was a sightwalk specifically to them as a body. Yep, no, I understand, and it's a valid point, but. Okay. Public comment. Does anybody from the public have any comments on anything that is not on the agenda that they would like the Planning Board to talk about? Yes, sir.
Come to the microphone, please.
Yes, could you? Yes, please.
Is it on?
So my name is Neltay Noah, and I think the board has heard me back in last winter regarding language change to medical marijuana requirements of excluding a site that's within thousand feet of school, daycare, and a church. And I made a request to have the language of the words daycare and a church to be struck or modify the distance that's being required of thousand feet. At the end of the, what, three or four meetings that I was heard on, the board taken a vote, and I believe it was five to three, of denying my request, but I just, at the end of the meeting, it was indicated to me, at least might have not been my full understanding, but you, the board was willing to take a look at the distance issue and also preschool word to be struck as consideration for further discussion. And it's been six months, and I found one more new information regarding my neighbor, which during the meeting, it was said that, I don't know what the number is, but on twenty-five Limerick Road and I think twenty-seven or twenty-eight Limerick Road, my direct abutter occupies occupied by Department of Education, and it was said by one of the board members that there was a school there. And actually, I went to Department of Education on that office, and it is an office building, but they do not have a school. They do have a preschool program. And I read through the school definition of the town ordinance, and it is clearly stated that preschool or daycare is not considered to be school. So I feel that my, it is true that, you know, I am advocating for this change because I do have a personal interest in medical marijuana facility because I have seen in person at least three people within, including my brother-in-law, who is in remission of brain tumor and lung tumor simultaneously for about a year and a half. And I have also read about mothers with babies that would have thirty or forty seizures a day being helped by medical marijuana oil. I'm not talking about people smoking the cannabis, but I really think that this issue has, the cannabis issue, marijuana issue, has been kind of worked by the media, and there's a lot of misinformation regarding the medical benefits of it. And I would like the board to really consider my request for striking the word preschool, daycare, and church of the language, or shorten the distance so that I can qualify on my high-performance experience.
We informed you that the reason that we could not is we weren't told by the Department of Education that there are children in the building, not in a daycare, not in a childcare setting. They are there for educational purposes, and they considered it to be a school. So we said no, based on that particular fact. If you wish to have the ordinance changed, you will need to go by the petition process. We cannot change that ordinance with a school in that building. You would have to take it to town.
It is not a school. I checked with the.
Sir, I am not willing to argue that particular point. We have documentation that says that it is a school.
You have a documentation?
We have information from the Department of Education.
You have a documentation, and I would like to have a copy of that.
If, as far as I remember, there was no documentation. It was just a discussion where some, some someone said that they thought there'd be, that there was a school, or they heard that it would be, or they were gonna be starting to have classes soon, but it was just a discussion. We didn't hear it directly from the Department of Education.
We do have something that indicates that there is a school in that building. I will get it, and I will have it sent to you.
I'd like to have a copy of that because I did visit physically three days last week to the office, and I asked exactly what kind of activities the Department of Education had, and she said that it was the office space, and now they have preschool. So it is not considered to be school.
To the chair, to the chair. School, preschool is a school. Daycare, excuse me, I'm a teacher.
Not according to the town zoning defining.
Preschool, preschool is not the same as a daycare.
It's on page twenty-eight of the definition.
Preschool is not the same of a daycare.
It says clearly on page twenty-eight.
Of which, of the ordinance?
Ordinance under school.
Department of Education has a preschool there. I will look into that myself, but I'm saying Department of Education has a preschool there. It's not a daycare. There's two different things.
I requested to talk to the acting director. She was busy, but I explained to her secretary why I was requiring and what kind of activities that the building was involved in. And she told me that it was an office space. Majority was office space with Department of Education. I'm sorry?
That was the young lady in that building?
Yes, he's talking. Yeah.
I was trying to figure out who we're talking to, making sure we all get the same.
Yeah, next door to me from twenty-five.
Child Development Services, thirty-nine Limerick Road.
Thirty-nine, that's where I went.
It's Child Development Services.
Next door to me.
That's the name of that organization.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And she said that it was preschool, which in the ordinance under school, am I misreading or?
I don't know. They're getting me the ordinance, but I know as an educator, you need a teaching certificate to teach preschool. In order to get a teaching certificate, you have to consider a teacher. To be a teacher, you're an educator. So therefore, it is not.
But on the school definition.
I'm asking him to get that for me.
Definition of the ordinance under school says publicly-private educational institution, including boarding schools, community colleges, and universities, elementary, middle, junior, high schools, high schools, and military classrooms, does not do preschool daycare facilities. So they're already, under the local zoning ordinance, they're already excluded as an educational facility. The issue then becomes, what does the state define as an educational facility with its purpose? Because they do have specific requirements that even if you mean reduce it from a thousand feet, the state still requires that you have a five-hundred-foot separation between educational facilities defined by the state and any other facilities. So the big question I'm trying to look for with all the conversation going on is if the state, excuse me, the state has a definition in some of its law that I have, but Susan may be able to find it.
Well, at this point, it's a moot question.
Next question, Alton. Does, if it does qualify, do you fit the distance from?
No, I don't fit the, this, I don't, thousand feet.
No, even if it was reduced, or if it was the five-hundred feet.
Yeah.
Do you qualify? Because if I remember correctly.
No, it's three hundred and twenty-one feet.
So I mean, even if it was reduced to five hundred, you still wouldn't qualify.
Well, I'm not, I could be, I didn't know Lee's statement regarding, are we talking about medical marijuana regulations, or are we talking about adult regulations?
Medical marijuana.
Okay, then that's a piece of information that I was not aware of, so I concede to that.
You want to look under chapter five fifty-eight of state law. There is a whole section on main medical marijuana use right here.
Chapter five fifty-eight?
Yeah.
Okay.
We will continue on from here. If you want us to review that, make a formal application.
I will review and see if I don't qualify based on state five hundred foot, then it is moot point, and I'm sorry that I've taken up.
Oh, no, that's okay.
No.
But don't ever be sorry.
You're here for to communicate. We don't get brain telepathies unless somebody does a talkie or does some writing.
I just want you to, you know, know that this is not so much as a personal thing, but I just, in this kind of public format, and trying to bring the benefits of medical marijuana, and I urge all of you to just do a little bit of research and that there is a benefit, and collectively somehow that even the five-hundred-foot limit in the main medical marijuana rules, if it exists, then, I mean, I'm sure it exists, five fifty-eight, I will work on to get that changed because it's not, it's not anything that should be defined in that way. So I appreciate your time.
Okay, thank you.
No, hey, also, do what you gotta do, or, I mean, because guess what? We, this is how things get changed, is because it's the public, it's not us. Okay, and go for it.
Okay. Well, I'm glad that I'm welcome back. Thank you.
Thank you.
You always welcome back.
It was much more difficult on its own, though. I could barely hear you.
Yeah.
So this is good.
Oh, good luck, Neltay.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, new applications. Cape Rundle Cottage Preserve LLC subdivision, conditional use amendment sketch plan. Proposal to create phase six of the subdivision with an increase between eighty and one hundred new seasonal cottages. The proposed subdivision amendment is located on tax map eleven, lot nine. The owner is a Rundle Kenny Bunkport Cottage Preserve LLC, and Rick Light, P E, is the applicant's agent. You're up.
Pick it up. Or, well, look at, I.
Yeah.
Of course.
Sorry.
Rick, why don't you pick this one? This one's definitely on.
Test, test. Thank you, thank you. So, good evening. My name is Rick Light with Light Environmental Design, and Joni Stevenson is with Cape Rundle.
Speak into the mic, Rick.
Upside. And unfortunately, Joe Paulini, as you know well, the managing partner, had a conflict tonight and wanted to send his regards. And he wanted to also let you know, this is other, what's ten-plus years we've been working on this project since the early days. It's the first time he's missed a meeting, and he was remorse about that, but he had a conflict he couldn't get out of, so he does send his regards. So tonight, what we'd like to present is a very conceptual review of a potential expansion idea and option for the Cape Rundle Cottage Preserve. And I thought, since there are some new members, even though we were just in recently for a phase five, a minor amendment on some of the roads here, that I would sort of step back and look at the big picture of the project and then work our way into what we're talking about, if that's okay. Everybody can see this. This is an aerial plan, and I've got a couple of boards, and I'm gonna sort of walk through the boards to sort of, and so if the public can see as well. This board here is an aerial plan that shows basically Route One on the right side, Mountain Road on the left, and the Eastern Trail right along the boundary of the project. And this jagged property line like this is about three hundred acres, two hundred ninety-four to be exact, is the project. Doesn't register real well on this plan, but hopefully you can see it, that we have multiple phases that come through the project. Community center and developed areas are down towards Route One, and the main road, Patriots Way, comes through and it stops at a gate, but extends for emergency purposes to Hidden Meadows, which is the private road here, Hidden Meadows subdivision. And the area, so if you look at the project, this is all a fifty-eight acre open space piece. We've got about a, I think it's a five acre open space piece down here. A wastewater system is in here, and just a whole ton of open space for trail work and whatnot. The area we're gonna be talking about tonight is this upper, I guess, northwesterly portion of the site, former, belonged to Porter Land Preservation, and was acquired under the project. So let me sort of drill down a little bit here. This is basically the same plan, but it shows the phasing of the project, and I just wanted to point out, it's a slightly different scale. Again, phases, we identified in the subdivision approvals. If you recall, we identified the phases by color for the purposes so that we didn't, we didn't know at the time sequentially what was gonna be, I think phase one was pretty obvious, the red phase, but we didn't know sequentially, the owners didn't know what they might.
Essentially, what we've done is Cape Rundle has completed phase one and phase two, which is the green, phase three, which is the blue. Each of these phases, if you recall, is, some phases are for construction purposes, phase one A, one B, B A, three B, et cetera. And phase four is the orange phase, four A on Patriots Way, four A on Frontier Way. Four B is just completed, the last spring, the spring and summer, I'm guessing, wait, my lands keeping and whatnot. And currently, phase five is the remaining yellow phase, which is a permanent six, three plus or minus units. And we've broken that into five A, which is this first portion, which is one, seven units. The remaining eight, my man, right, three, six, three, seven units, five B would probably be forthcoming for construction in the next year, depending on market, well, sort of, five A, so basically working on five A right now. This area has been cut, non-rough, but cut, and using part of our stock yard for the contract. So the reason we're here is the market's been doing well. We've used and selling, and I look into the future, once we're in, right now, in five A, five B, probably will be built out. I want to be clear that not while we use it, it's sold, but it's been built. It's built in clusters, as you see, they're built, they're building clusters, tiny groups, and then market sale, we're selling, so we have one hundred and thirty or so warehouses. One sixty-five have been sold. Remaining units are retained by Cape Rundle. So part of the reason is that we're looking at is to create a new, basically a new set of neighborhoods that can help keep the project generating and moving along after. They're running out of inventory, so we'll just come up with. So this sort of focus on the upper area, this is a blow-up. Let me, I'm gonna do, take a bow in here. Funny while I'm doing this. What's the last time you've said, the last time I thought this, I'm glad to be planning for meetings, you know, not often, but having been through so for the last year and a half, very glad of doing live meetings, let me tell you, I have not enjoyed doing some sightwalks.
We have.
So. So. I think it's one of here, one is a different scale plan, a point scale. I've taken the left corner of the property, as you look at it, and this is right to the five seats on the subdivision plan. I wanted to point out what is currently approved, there was improvement in subdivision. And again, this area down here, we need the five B, when you plan over here, this is Hidden Meadows Road, Mountain Road, and fifteen hundred feet along the Eastern Trail here. And this area was officially permitted as a conceptual, sort of recrea, second recreation area. The idea initially was, with this amount of density, we have great, wonderful community center. We have, you know, purpose how a second pool, auxiliary pool, which was called approved a year ago, a year and a half ago, is almost, it's three quarters done with construction right now. We have future wall fields over the wastewater area, with dog park, oldness, trails, connectivity. But basically, this became the second auxiliary pool, in essence, from a recreational perspective. And so this is, they don't intend to build this at this point. So the idea was, what can we do? This entire acreage up here, the former Porter Land Preservation, it was about a hundred acres. From here north, it's probably around seventy-five acres, entirely wooded, beautiful land, very, very interesting land, there are a lot of beautiful landmarks. So that's what we're talking about, is what's developed in this basic area here. What we have, gray areas are basically a stream, another stream, it's a French to the site. Now I'll get more into that. And we have several weapon systems, weapons systems, and the darker colors are several burr pools that have been matted years ago, what is, if it gets smaller right here. That's something I'll talk about in a minute. So this gives you a perspective of what was originally generally the area that we talked about relative to what was approved. Station. Turn it over. So again, sort of focusing in, I'll get to the scale plans. This is again, Hidden Meadows, sort of John Meadows subdivision. The concept here is coming off of a little lane, which is in phase five B, Patriots Way, it's part of the way down here. And coming into this back land and coming up with a series of neighborhoods. But first want to talk about the land itself, and the property is pretty amazing. We've got Eastern Trails, each of them, if you recall, we have a connection to the trail now under the, under this part of the project down here, and we work with Eastern Trail Alliance to give permission to do that and fit it, construct it, and that's a long, I actually, I did the bike down, did your, did your boat trail out back here, and had a great time, and did some site analysis of the other trails. And you've got this sort of area here that got over the years ago, that's a nice feeling of the land. So essentially, this land is, goes up to this large gnome knob, this gnome, which really, at first board, if you recall, that's really the type of land that goes all the way back, the K K, the tower, and goes along the north side of all of the Cape Rundle Cottage Preserve, and almost everything. One, it's sort of a high-litting formation, and everything else comes off there. So if you can envision, the idea would be to have a component of units, specialized neighborhoods, focused on a water body, whether it be a stormwater pond or something of that sort. Stormwater's gonna be a big deal here, obviously. A battalion, sort of like a battalion, fiance type of a narrative here, with something of interest, a real entity that really draws people and creates a set of neighborhoods, a real, really using some of the stone to create something special here. And then some loop roads, connected roads with, plus with the units. The dark area here is just conceptual, we have one, we have walked the land, studied it. And these sort of suggest like ledge formations, that in units that are already set up a ledge, almost like phase, you had seen phase, it could be on the side, stone walls, go behind you, it's part of a ready for this sort of thing. So a lot of stepping in units, and again, and. sector, the state has 250 foot of her significant rural pool, significant buffer, of which you're able to use 25% of that, 100 foot, high value, buffer of rural pool. The DDP, or, sorry, the course, starts looking at you at 750 feet away, and asking questions about levels of development. So I want to give you a sense of scale, this is 250 feet from this rural pool up here, 500, 750 kind of comes through here. And then when you sort of overlap this little pool here, we've got the radio lines through here. And we've had discussions with the course several years ago, we're looking at the pond area back here. So we, I think our next step is bending comments with the board is really going, and if it's a little more inclined to talk with the board, is maybe about the concerns, and we've done a good job keeping a lot of open space and whatnot, but we're just, so. So the concept is essentially, in our application, we have shown about 100 plus units, my application, I think he said, gave it to 100, we like to get up near 100 units if possible, and include the goal. And one of the things that, that really predicates this, and there is that, I do, I want to back up, did do the staff, thank, and, and for meeting with us, but we want to ask you ideas that, you know, BJ and Pam, there is that we know, probably, or will probably want to take a look at. One would be traffic, and the path, for the sort of development, that's a question of what's going on with the traffic, everything is going on on Route One. So we've already engaged Bill Bray, traffic engineer here, and our former engineer, we did this, the original study we done back in 2010, Tom Brode did done that, Tom Brode wants to fire, so, so Bill's dealing with the project, he's been at the town back in 2010, and he felt that it would be, not much, it was definitely longer time, but he, he was. But Bill's gone out, it's done accounts, every season, and pending the final, we've processed, done accounts today, we will do more with traffic study, this project, a little, that, that project. He's been, again, that project, it's not a day I'm going to see, but this is, kind of thing, people, but eventually, we'll, we'll tend to, sort of, settle somewhere to the lower end of that, people tend to come, and trickle in on a Friday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, some people stay for the entire season, I mean, this is, entire eight or nine months, other people, you got to come for, some people, when they're a week, whatever. So this is a real, which is one of the uses for development, because the process, you know, people just have to, people just have to, the other issue on this thing, the real issue from my perspective, is density, wastewater capacity. One, where this is on wastewater, open system, and the system has a capacity, actually, of 281 plus units, within the community center, and project security department, 263. We do have some extra capacity built into the system. And if you look at the, the, little we made, we've done an analysis on the project, and first question, Bill, can we find other areas on site, suppose, and, believe it or not, because the site is so predominant of ledge, upper half, and the lower half, and better soils, a lot of those areas, that, this whole area, I've looked at, on site of our area as well, and I've looked at this whole area out here, we've got one soil, lower edge, that's , you know, you've had, over like, a whole, years ago, a corn, so, pretty good idea of a lot. The groundwater is high enough, that it's very difficult to get water, you have the capacity with wastewater, is in my opinion, based on what I've found, so. So bottom line, at this point, so what we've done at this point, and again, a lot of this is preliminary, that we've taken an assessment of, sort of, several different ways, I'll get into it in a little bit, that's why I just sort of run through the way to look at it. Is, you know, we have, say, 18 on Page Three, in our, in our middle letter, we have extra capacity built into the system, about 18 units. If we, we have the front lot of the project, lot C1, we call it. This lot, so-called commercial lot, which has been, has not been sold or held, on the, Scott Yard, that had a certain amount of capacity built into the wastewater system, separate system. So we took that capacity now, and we have some capacity on site, some small development, that well, this is, there's enough capacity on that, something small, not a more impressive one, and you might get 25 to 30 units. We, we found some, additionally, that's in the rear, that are reserve systems, we'll get, add one of those systems, with PHS as approval, for us to get, that's certainly, taking away a different pieces of the system, we may be able to create a new capacity. And lastly, I did lose some soil structure, now that this part of the property is open field here, a little field next to Hidden Meadows, this corner, Eastern Trail, and found that the soils are wonderful, and we might be able to capacity, first, in 30 units. Pretty sure that, due to nitrate standards, we'd probably have to, like, be logic assessment now, but, again, very conceptually, I think we've got capacity, for 80 to 100 units, but we're not 100% there. So we know we've got, what we're going to do, because we're looking into this things, we wanted to get, you know, get the board an idea of what we're, what we're looking at. Generally, though, with your ordinance requirements, open space, just throw some quick numbers here, the total, the overall requirements on the seasonal property, is 20% of open space for the project. On this project, 294 acres, the developed acres after, roughly, area of 60, I believe, 166% open space, so we're well within the open space requirements, so. In terms of that residential density, and we often want to check, safety, we have a structural planning, the residential density based on 7 minutes per acre under the ordinance, but allowing technically 700 units, and this is, this is saved at, 250, 40, something like that. Well, under the provisional density requirements, the space requirements of the ordinance, that's sort of the jump of the functionality, things we can look at. The other thing that we will do, if you do for the longer, if you like, that, so now that, obviously, once we formalize, that, public, they require, and never, you know, we do it in form of visual, that require, and, 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 concerns. So I want to show you just one, leave a one, last, and, four here, is the second. It's hard to show photos of a property when you haven't been out there, it's all, so, my, the, the site, the, the back of the land here, there's such unique character, up on the ledge, that I just wanted to sort of throw out some ideas, just, just to give you a quick visual, and I assume the board will, will step up some point, sidewalk, but, at the end of Bristol Lane, which is the, lane right here, this is, this is actually an existing logging road, a tow road, make with winter conditions, a Bristol line, for me here, this is kind of what we did, the new road, the Charlotte Lane, following existing tow road for the most part. And she got it for this upper reach up here, the stream, the bisects, it's tight, it's amazing, really amazing, there's this, this is a, 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 I know, again, it's difficult to understand, we can't see it that closely, but this lower piece, it's just below here, there's this, actually, old waterfall, with the stream, with the stand there, it's, it's just, it's amazing. So the idea that we can work around these elements, protect them, buffers, but yet, maybe have trails or access to these, it's just, it's just spectacular. And to give you a sense of the, the, the character of the site, this is one of my favorite photos, it's actually, on the other side of this, this water hole here, that's just erratic on the side of the hill, it's a side hill, that erratic, older, it's half the size of the wall, it's, it's bigger than this, so that's the kind of terrain we're talking about, very interesting, very rugged, I'm not saying the piece of last, in the upper level, but we have, they only have these sort of features, much as we have in the lower face, but it's even more spectacular up here, which, on the other hand, is, conversely, means that, you know, destructibility is difficult, so it's, it's challenging. So I think I'll leave it with that, and just look forward to the conversation.
You're a great, go for it, so, well, you did a great job addressing a lot of things that I had questioned, as I was looking at this earlier, such as the density, so you're well within the density numbers. Also, the open space, this, right now, the boundary that we can see, that's actually the, with, outside of the, the open space, so you're just showing that, that's, the open space is beyond, it's, it's not shown there?
Through the chair, the open space, when we calculate the open space, again, right now, sort of conceptually, we've taken all, not just a big square around there, but the areas that are undeveloped, basically taking the areas around it that are undeveloped. So that's included in the open space, if you follow me, the areas that are not.
Have you been doing that in the other phases, designated around as open space, or I thought it was more just a straight lines?
What we did for the original, we've never changed the open space from the approved plan, the approved plan, because everything that's been built has followed the approved plan, except for we've come back for minor amendments here and there. Let me pull up, I think, probably more germane to talk about, show the overall project. And, so. If one looks at the overall project area, and I apologize, this, this line is sort of a, it's a mapping line, but this dark line is the project area. This was formerly part of the Porter Preservation piece. Up and around, and jogging all the way down here, the piece actually that's off the site that goes down here, this is open space. When we did the original plan, we haven't changed the opens, the open space calculations, and I couldn't tell you what the original percent were, there's a note on the plan that's recorded, that was already computed. And so we've added, when we added this area, we've taken that out of the open space, and what we find is that we're still at 66%. So clearly, our open space right now is over 66%. And so we just basically took a bubble around this area here. But these areas, when we calculated the prior, areas that are basically outside the woods line, if this is the cut line for all these areas here, those areas were all included as open space, as well as the formalized 58 acre parcel, DEP parcel, and the, I think it's a six acre, 5.9 acre parcel down here, those are formally defined, deeded, you know, restricted areas, but also included open space within each element area when we did the open space calculations, in accordance with the ordinance. So that, yeah.
Yeah, good, thanks, I just wanted to be sure, not that you were doing, I didn't want like a switch and bait, that we, we approved something earlier, now it's going to change, so you're, you're keeping what was approved.
Yes.
Great, that's not an issue. Then there's also, I think, the, the two things it comes down to for me, it's, one is, is going to be the wastewater, and how you deal with that, but that, that's, that's for you and engineers to figure out. So the remaining issue for me would be the traffic. There's a lot of, even though a lot might stay there, it's going to be, let's say, fireworks, Fourth of July, you're going to have a lot of people coming and going that day. There's only one egress or entrance to the place. Do you have any, I know you, you mentioned the, the traffic study, but still, I think, having that extra 80 units or so, would that put it over, whatever that, that trigger is?
That's a good question. I, I, I can't speak for that, I was hoping Bill Bray might have some preliminary numbers just to be able to have a discussion about it without getting into the details, but he hasn't been able to generate that, he's, he's pretty busy, but, the one thing, if you do recall, and want to back up on the traffic, because that's a good point, Tom, through the chair, this was a, subject to a DOT, Traffic Movement Permit, or call it a TMP, if you recall, as well as the traffic study, the same traffic study went to the town, but we were a Level One DOT permit. So if you recall the way, it was really interesting the way the numbers worked out, that the DOT permit, in the original assessment, was based on this lot, in fact, you can actually see conceptually, if you look down here, we made an assumption that lot was developed completely commercially, it's nine acres, we took the maximum amount of development, making an assumption on office space, maybe a restaurant, you know, we came up with a reasonable assumption for a sort of a maximum level of development. And, and then the 260, 59 at the time, 259 units, including the community center and all the other amenities. And using the ITP analysis, again, the resort itself, even at full buildout, did not trigger improvements at the entrance. It was the development of this lot here, because that's where you get the peak, and as you know with traffic, it's peak hour. If you have cars coming, if you have 100 cars a day, and they come over a 12 hour day, you've got one car every six minutes, you'd fall asleep even trying to count it, I mean, it doesn't make, there's no, it's sort of like the, the drip in your faucet, and in the day it'll fill up your sink, but while you're there, you, I mean, you can't even see the drip. But this is what would trigger us having to do an offsite improvement. So one of the mitigating, one of the mitigating plans for this is when we trigger that number, however we trigger it, that peak number, and I can't tell you what that number was, we're obligated to do a whole, if you recall, a whole, probably 500 feet or more, probably 1,000 feet, there's a conceptual plan that we're obligated to build out and completely construct and build, through the DOT, with a left-hand turn movement, you know, left-hand turn lane, center at grade island, and actually taking the ledge on the corner up here, pulling it back a little bit, for site distance, et cetera, although the site, the speed limit's been reduced, which is great in that zone. So that, but that was really triggered by this, my, I don't want to speak in advance of the traffic study, my sense is, the addition of the 80 units won't put us into a, won't trigger this, and it won't put us into the next level Traffic Movement Permit, which goes from 100 peak trips per hour to 200. But I don't want to speak too early, we'll let Bill Bray tell us that. But from the perspective, which we reckon, in perspective of having a single access for this entire development, I, I totally understand, we've looked, Joe Paulini has looked and talked with any possible, just thinking about from a construction standpoint, when we've got trucks coming through, and talked to some of the folks, has talked to Hidden Meadows about the possibility of, of, you know, can some of the construction workers come through, and at this point, it's, it's not happening. If you recall, there's a gate at the end of the road, and that will be, we have emergency access rights, of course, but not, you know, vehicular access. So I can't speak for Hidden Meadows at this point, if that were something that could be negotiated, would give us a second means of, of access or egress, but right now, it's out to Route One, we don't have access down to Campground Road, we have a right of way there, I think it's six. Traffic movement permit, which goes from one hundred peak trips per hour to two hundred. But I don't want to speak too early, we'll let Bill Bray tell us that. But from the perspective, which we reckon, in perspective of having a single access. For this entire development, I, I totally understand, we've looked, uh, Joe Paulini has looked and talked. With any possible, just thinking about from a construction standpoint, when we've got trucks coming through. Um, and talked to some of the folks, has talked to Hidden Meadows about the possibility of, of, you know, can some of the construction workers come through, and at this point, it's, it's not happening. If you recall, there's a gate at the end of the road, and that will be, we have emergency access rights, of course. But not, you know, vehicular access. So, I can't speak for Hidden Meadows at this point, if that were something that could be negotiated. Would give us a second means of, of access or egress, but right now, it's out to Route One. Uh, we don't have access down to Campground Road, we have a right of way there, I think it's sixteen feet. Don't quote me on this, but we don't actually connect, there's a, the, the legal and the, the deed research on this from Lower Village Survey, I can tell you, is. Nightmarish, back, as you know, back in this area in here. And there's a connection that goes down. To Campground Road, just down here, but we don't actually have a physical connection, there's a gap, it's like a gore. So there isn't, there's a connection, but there isn't a connection. So, I guess a long-winded way of saying, we're going to look at this long and hard, but we certainly want to hear from the board on your concerns. About that, and that's why we thought we would meet with Public Safety, uh, early on here and get their.
Talks with the fire chief.
We intend to do that, yeah, after we meet with you, yeah.
So, um, yeah, that would be, that was my biggest concern, is granted, that's what you had prior to with your current, um, plans. But that is a long stretch of road, going into a different section, over ledge, you're shaying around the different sides like that, and to not have another way out of that far in, concerns me. Um, and also, how close on your, on your thing, are you coming to the Eastern Trail of building? In other words, where would you, I don't know, and I don't mean build, I mean like, seeing the eastern, being on the Eastern Trail. Um, is something, again, many people enjoy, how close are you planning on building to the actual property? So people will see buildings and things and. As they're trying to enjoy the Eastern Trail, that's not part of your community.
Uh, that's a very good question, and through the chair. Um, there's a, and for the board members' edification, there is a hundred foot buffer requirement around the perimeter of the property, we can put stormwater, you know, and. Green elements in there, it's allowed, but along this border here, we have a complete one hundred foot buffer that would be completely wooded and untouched. Um, and, but you break up a good question, could you see?
Could you see some of the back of those units, the night lights? I've been on the Eastern Trail, and I pay most attention to that, so. I would say you might be able to see a filtered view of some of these, but it's something good to look at, and maybe go and study that property and all the materials. No. Views would be at least a hundred feet to any development, but it would be another.
Right.
Now, is that pond also going to be used for fire protection too?
Uh, Chair, we have.
I'm just thinking, I'm thinking, I mean, because it's so vast. Of the way it's not clustered together, but it's spread out. That, I know you have your main water systems and everything else. Because it's all in public water, I mean, uh, but are, is that a possibility?
That is, I guess, we'll bring that up with the fire chief, the pond.
Not, not to substitute your fire hydrant.
But in addition.
Yes.
If the chief were to just sit down in the dry lake, I don't think we'd have any problem with that at all. What I will say though, one of the sort of conceptual plans is. I, I think that pond will be, we'd have stuck it stormwise. I know that the idea, rather than using one, well, the MP, a one device to treat a thing. We would hopefully have implemented small soil filters, file, uh, fire retention areas, that sort of thing.
To keep it clean.
And to keep it clean, stormwater buffers throughout the project, so the ponds wouldn't take the problem at all, I can't tell you what certain elements would work.
Like your main pond?
Exactly.
Right behind the clubhouse?
Right.
That's crystal clear.
So this pond, I guess, might be a bit larger than that, and.
And then you drain it, right?
Exactly. But we could sort of bring that up with the chief, the chief there, the desire to do that. We will be putting hydrants, a full water main extension here.
I think also too, that even now with your, uh. Route one, uh. Road study, or whatever you want to call it, traffic study, I think turnaround for. Parents' wives, for you, but also for, uh, Route One. To, uh, as we talked about scaling back the, the ledge, I think that should be. Done no matter what, on Route One. I mean, uh, I think that's. Is important.
Let's see, uh, this is one that, within the DOT, right away.
Yeah, but I mean, because, I mean, we've had. Part of it, you've had the water company, they built a road up through there, or whatever else not. Uh, you have another portion of a piece of property farther down. That I think is under contract right now, or anything else. And, I mean, uh, um, with your road study and everything else, of course, the last two years. Everybody's been per se a cocoon, who haven't been out, so your numbers aren't really. True. They are true by what you see, but they're not true as if we weren't in this cocoon status. And we're still in it.
So, a question on that, you mentioned that, uh, at a certain point, you would have to put that turn lane in. That was all predicated by the retail, the commercial development?
Retail development based on assumptions for that retail. And honestly, there, I mean, the mark, that lot is still on market, but there's been no.
Yeah.
I think because of lack of sewer, if you were reluctant to get into a commercial situation. The wastewater, it's suitable, there's a reluctance there, so that would be a public sewer now.
So, in, in effect, you, you'll be borrowing the potential of that property for the, the septic.
Certainly, that's never worked out, and we could recognize that, the risks they have to take, there is some capacity, again, on that lot, Joe Noel was our soil scientist, there is some capacity. At the front of the lot, it's very thick soils, but, you know, for a reasonable sized development, not for, you know, full scale development.
Yeah.
That's something we have to consider. The wastewater analysis, we have a lot more work to do on it, but we wanted to get, get an idea of where do we stand, roughly speaking, where can we find the capacity of the site? Where can we find what needs capacity? We've been trying to do water systems, or water flow analysis, based on the KKW records, we're alive for two years. A little more concrete than I might see, because the flow analysis improved the irrigation, some of the, some of the. You know, we've got pumps that we're checking, so we've got several ways we're looking at wastewater flows, if we can find where our flows are less than projected. On top of having built that capacity, that's another way of building it, if the DHS agrees with us. Then, you know, we could find more capacity of the system, but we're not quite there yet, but we're looking at all these options.
Are you, are you still, uh, trying to work with, um, the, the sewer districts on either end?
Uh, respectfully, we have, Chair, we have, uh, pause, that we haven't seen the town or Kennybunk. Together, really moving forward with it, and we really can't, I would still want to begin, basically. Kennybunk told us, really, we, the private group can't push it forward, politically, we'd love to push it forward, if we can do so. Down in the industry, some of, or we are a hundred percent behind that, to move that forward, help develop your whole business district there. I know, I know who's sitting here, I totally understand, he's sitting in the front row, yeah, so, well, we're, we're very interested. I can speak to Joe Paulini a hundred percent, very interested, and working with the town on extending sewers, and I can, I can speak honestly that. The owner, Joe Paulini, had said before, if they were to bring sewer, this group, you know, paper all the way with. Put, you know, probably a million bucks, take sewer down to campground, we've studied it, we've looked at it, as you know. Past meetings, and you had your consultants, would have heard, I believe, through their assessment, we've seen several years ago. There's a pump station to be required right down here at the low spot, that's the, uh, the mini goal. And, you know, Joe has been on record committed to, if sewer came. And we could connect, they would, they would construct, you know, and, and that whole section of campground, once a time. And that would really, actually, it would take the edge off of dealing with the wastewater system, but we're expanding as we speak. Putting it into what we're facing, it's starting tomorrow, actually.
Yeah.
Does the board have any other questions?
Yeah, that one. In all your gathering of all your different cottages, in the massive acreage that we have here. And this is just a, an awful common wall. Do you guys have like an Audubon group that. Play bird watching and everything else? I mean, I was just thinking, I mean, because all the foliage and, I mean, uh. Per se retired community, and you have people from all over the country that come here. I mean, uh, it's, it's, uh, people might.
I actually go here as well as work here.
Yeah, I mean, I was just thinking, I mean, uh, I mean, because. Any of us who have a house, you love to watch the birds. I mean, uh, and you have enough foliage, and you have your woods and wildlife and everything else, that's why I was just wondering if. Yeah, they had their own little club from part of the world around. I mean, it's just a thought. I mean, because I know like, around behind the clubhouse, when you've got a big pond. You've got all the birds that come flying in, I mean, you know, I mean, uh, it's like a gathering.
Uh, I, I can speak, when I'm out there personally, my own personal.
Time.
Think the same thing, and the trail development, we still have the opportunity to do. And the butterfly garden, and that's the small garden, whatever people's idea of. But I can speak at track, they don't speak for staff, do a lot of senior living work, and we have a large senior living community, called Highland Team, tops. Adult, and, and that is predicated on open space, the whole concept of, started with Chance Rivers, occasionally, started with. The people there, the seniors, they are not only pre members, it's like, they do their own, they have their own bird club, they have their own bird trip, they do. So they, they were all, and that's people who are there, they're comfortable.
That's, I mean, I, I mean, we've never thought of this, I was just, uh, sitting there thinking of this. Because that's going to, you're going to go climb on the rock walls, somewhere up back up to there.
Yeah.
And you're higher in elevation, you can be more observant on different things.
Yeah, I, I agree with that, that's what we live in, I think it's probably why.
My only concern on this project, literally, the only concern that I have. I think you need a second means of egress, if you're going to put a human trap in there. I cannot imagine trying to draw all that traffic on the Route One. And I can't see you putting it on a mountain road. Because if you put it on mountain roads, it's going to cost a couple of minutes, knowledge, just to fix the road.
Plus they'd have to go over the Eastern Trail, I mean, you can't get.
Well, yeah, there's the whole idea, not so much the, the, the trail, it's an eastern tunnel. Getting, getting them to give you information to all of us. I, I can't see going up that way, just because of the condition, it's not. But I do think you need to have second means of egress, I could be wrong, I could look at that and say that's a point of effect, I just think three hundred and seventy years. Going on, on Route One, at that one point, is a recipe to disaster, if something happens.
That, that, I, I, I guess, I, I think the beauty of this is, again, and let the numbers generate, we're speaking of that, the study, but. Uh, we totally respect that, if any, we're looking at this pretty closely. And we're hopeful that the numbers, looking at the trip generation, is, is, is sort of, it's. It's inverse, basically, the ones people think about, I think of it as a, hopefully the numbers compare out, if something comes, if it works, we're here to get your comments, and that's something that comes along. Hopefully the numbers will work out, but we still don't have a significant impact on that in a second. But I can't say that right now, but if we get it done.
Okay, Chair, if anybody else has done, I do have one question of Rick.
Well. Go ahead. So I, I am a little curious, we've never really had a chance to speak about it, but. The, um, original pool up in that area included a fairly large secondary recreation area. That would probably go away. If this gets to develop, has there been any thought or any need for additional demand? You're adding another hundred plus or minus units up there, are you going to look at some other secondary locations for recreation?
Reactive, uh, great question, through the chair, so, if you want to, you want to jump in and jump, but I think. There's just two things, the dynamics of, um. Joining as being, being a member of the association, is that the owners are responding, sort of, I believe, but the owners respond to his desires of the regiment, the major president, and the regiment meeting. So henceforth, right now, they're putting this, you know, with the water group, it's a year and a half ago. The second pool is, like I said, it's under construction, there's a need or a desire for a second pool. And the secondary, you have some kids, and the other spaces, and that pool, with it, we have, as, on the original plan. Watching for its outside fire, it looks like, outside fire pit in that construction. Um, amenity areas, a trail connection to a dog, a wooden dog park, it's out the back, some of the separate areas. So those amenities are still to be developed, so the answer is, there was, without a large pond, felt there wasn't a need. For a, that development, or other places could fill this. Would it be great to have that as well, I'm sure it would be, um, but, but this, we felt, I think the owners felt this would be better use of that land, because it would fill it quite well elsewhere. Um, one thing I can tell you though, we did investigate, I mentioned earlier, that. We met with the board, we met with the DEP, fishing wildlife, everybody. Several years ago, when we were exploratorily, that's the word, looking at that rec pond as a proof. We wanted to make it large enough, so there wasn't, it was still long, but it was large enough. That it could be something where you would take your kids. And bike out there, go fishing, have kayaks there, and watch, it's hard to make it worthwhile with a kayak. And, you know how when you're on Indian Park Hill, folks, people, there's a certain size where, not for major park, we have kids, there's a certain size pond, you just have to have a feel for it. There's a one acre pond big enough, a couple hundred, two meters, maybe, three, so we were looking at a pretty large pond, this location, we just have to hold. That's why they're trying to look in and see whether we have the hydrology to make it work, so. Bone went away saying, we, the regulators, we see what your concerns were, the buffer, and in the end. That didn't happen, because if it was going to be, a depond would have been extremely expensive to build, and the return on it, which is, just. Wasn't there economically to make it happen, but the idea of that, I think could be captured by a little bit of other things. It would be great to have a water body like that on the site that's not there, but, uh, I think if they could regulation or in fact, other spots.
Um, two things. On the second egress, don't we have something somewhere along the way? Even though that they're in their own world by themselves, it's like how we had Bartlett Farm. They had to have a definite, uh, second egress.
On, on this, no.
No, I said that they're in their own world.
Well, no, the only reason that there was a second egress, is so that the ambulance could get in there in case of an emergency, we never designed to use the crash.
Yeah, but I mean, even like Bartlett Farm, they, isn't that the second e, uh, second is more than just for emergency?
Bartlett Farm is a different situation.
I realize that, but I'm using that as an example.
We never required it, so.
Okay.
The trade-off, we have the lockbox at, at Hidden Meadows.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just, I'm just asking a question.
Fire chief agreed that would be good enough, so, that's what we have.
And so, then I, that was the question, right, so, from a emergency standpoint, we have two access, or questions about it. And again, the board will appall that second access, the crap of that was part of the building, we didn't build it three years ago, and the flower maintained, so from an emergency perspective. We have the two access, from a vehicular standpoint, we don't really have the rights. Didn't have, we have to negotiate it, the board, you heard the comments before, it's desired, it's in metal. But that's, again, we're here, but that's not terribly desired by the board, so love to see how the crap numbers come out.
Hidden Meadows is private, isn't it? Hidden Meadows is private, yeah, so it's, okay.
But also too, after that, to go from there, you still would have to cross the eastern trail, which would be giving another possibly problem within itself, if, if it was like on the old river road.
I have concern for how close it seems to be going to the eastern trail and how the eastern trail is utilized by more than just a rundle and the people brought in for, it's part of attraction for people to come here and also people for rental to use and to have it backing up to. And even though you have lights or whatever, it's sound will be coming out, parties will be coming out, noise will be coming out, you walk the eastern trail to enjoy the eastern trail. That, that concerns me.
Does that border your property, as it go right along?
Because it does, does it border on the other side to the other private lane that goes the next crossing of eastern trail? Your end of your property? At the very back of your property, but because I know Hidden Meadows is one cross and there's another cross that's a private lane right at the end of your property, I think. Right.
And something I think occurs upon the next physical connection is at the railroad.
There's one that's farther up though, closer to, because I know I've done the half marathon there. So I'm just saying, I know there's another road that goes, is in a private road that crosses it, that's got to be pretty close to the end of your property. Yeah. And there's only two houses or three houses on each one of those, because there's no traffic, per se, on hidden. Do you know what I mean, on the other road too, I think there's two. Correct, because I, and the people that live there, but I'm saying the next is also just two, so there's no traffic crossing the trail. Do you know what I'm saying? Yeah. There's one on the other side of your property, I'm guessing like would be above where your clip is on the picture. I'm saying there's another small little tiny road similar to Hidden Meadows, and that's it. And like I'm gonna say, there's like five or six cars potentially crossing the lane and the trail as it goes, and there's not a lot of interaction, per se. What I'm saying, for people that utilize it for quiet, for solace, for bird watching, for all the things you're describing that your people would be doing, that would be something that might be interrupted by how close your, it looks like from your pictures, how close you'd be in, plus the pond and how you're having, you know, a display and things looking at it. I mean, it'd be great for your people and I appreciate that, but as a person, as a rundle resident, a person utilizes it, it just makes me concerned a little bit of how it would be perceived.
I was gonna take a moment.
No, thank you all, your comments are very, we're listening and very well poised, I really appreciate your input of the board. I might suggest that for something like this, I suspect we may want to come back for another conceptual plan before we really dig into this thing and refine it. Come back before a whole lot of the page is filed, the board is ready, we'll see how things look, we've got the traffic numbers. And then we'll make a conversation with the board, see if they can see that before they get into this. Thank you very much.
Would that have to be go back to the state because of the TIF?
Well, that, that's a completely separate issue.
But I mean, it's a thought.
Is it? Through the chair, yes, my flag is locked up, I didn't think to bring that up.
My understanding, we had a conversation with Lee J about it and looked at our old maps, the TIF zone did not include, because why would you include undeveloped area and take it away from your 2%? Did not include the backland, so the TIF would have to be amendment. Obviously, our DEP permits and all that would be, you know, amended or whatnot, but yeah, I think the TIF district would have to be amended as would the HOA, the condominium documents, there's a whole litany, a sort of domino effect, but we're at the infancy of looking at this, but. We look at one of them right here in the room. Thank you very much for your comments.
Okay, quickly, I know, excuse me, the findings of fact for Oak Ridge Terrace, two are making their way around. Please make sure they get signed into N so that she can circulate. Okay, all right. Great, I actually think I'm seeing Jamie this week on other business, so I will remind him to get him signed. One of the things that the chair and I talked about briefly this morning, and I didn't think tonight would be the great way to start, but we'll start at the next meeting, is doing educational short pieces towards the end of the meeting during the planner's report and talk about, you know, whether it's conflicts of interests and what qualifies, what doesn't, or whether it's how the board process works or anything like that sort. So I'll start bringing that kind of stuff forward, just so that we can do our own little educational stuff on on various, various issues for planning board process and planning board review. I thought there was something else I didn't write it down that I needed to mention to you folks. But since I did not write it down, I'm not gonna worry about it.
I got it. Holy Donut is playing color change. They're matching their colors already, they're working on the on the, already, just for point of interest.
Yes, they have been going through there, doing some work in the buildings, talking with Jim Nagel about permitting issues and whatnot. So that side of the permitting issues, so they are moving forward fairly quickly.
I'm just saying the color, I mean, the blue is no longer a blue, it's a gray with their other color buildings.
We also, Monday did not receive any submittals for the next meeting, so the next meeting, you want to talk about what you want to do, if anything, you also want to talk possibly looking into holiday schedule, Mr. Chair? I don't know if you want to do that tonight or if you're gonna wait. And there is a new submittal that came in today, which is late for the next meeting, but will be in front of you folks on the 16th, 16th, I believe it is. That is correct.
I was thinking that we, we could, we've got a number of different tweaks that we could make. We, well, we had a whole list of corrections that we could make at one point. For the, I think the manager's or the subdivision, I don't know how you guys feel about it. You want to, you want to start early on something?
Will that be on Zoom? Is that the one that's gonna be on Zoom because it's election? That's the election night.
Because this, it's election night and this room is occupied. I'll be sending out that information tomorrow.
I think it would make sense to chip away a few things that, rather than, in the past, we've been squeezing it in between busy meetings stay it up till 10:30, 11:00.
Since it's on Zoom, it's easier to focus and do not focus, but discuss it and have it up on the screen and talk about things that are more paper oriented than having people in front of you talking about it, so.
The presentation with all these maps and stuff.
We don't have any maps. We just have the audience. I would add, we like to discuss the whole concept of the bucket around property. Right, right now, it's 25 feet, you have no big bucket behind subdivision. I love the fact that these guys have a hundred foot bucket all the way around the property. It, it gives you, what we keep talking about, the rural culture of a rundle. So if you can't see the houses, that's pretty much what that culture represents.
You're talking about subdevelopments.
Subdivision, I'm not talking about the house. Personal houses, I'm not telling, subdivision, yes.
Plus the 25 feet isn't really substantial enough for wildlife habitat and everything.
It's good for nothing. It's good for nothing. I do know that.
That he showed me at one point, where it's just, you've got to know, all of the houses in that subdivision are on that one earth. It's far enough back that it's away from them. And it's just, it's just a design as opposed to, you said, not to look like different areas. I thought it, it looked rather interesting. And it would, it would minimize the infrastructure costs for the developer, and it would create the open space that we're looking for.
So let's, let's plan on that.
So yeah, let's, let's talk about that and talk about the platform.
Two things. One, anything on the charter?
There is a charter review committee, Keith is working on finding time, the dates available. He asked, he said Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday. And then we're meeting here, and I reminded him that the planning board meets here on Tuesday nights.
At their request. We were happy to do Zoom. I mean, just saying.
The issue, the issue becomes that there's at least two other people on the planning board that are on the charter. And we can't be in the place with the ones.
Now, you said you have a new application.
Yes.
I, even though we have nothing on our plate for the next meeting, is it anything qualify enough for so we don't get tied up in Christmas holidays, a preliminary start? Even though it may not quite meet the time?
No, and that's, and that's my fault, as the chair. It falls outside the 14 day restriction.
I was just thinking.
They're gonna have to wait. And it really wouldn't be fair to anybody else if all of a sudden we said, ah, we'll make an exception if we've got nothing on our plate.
Okay, I mean, I was just, I don't even know what it is, it's.
Oh, I, I don't either.
You gotta give people, you gotta advertise it, there's advertising, move people to places.
Yeah, okay, I mean, it was.
Yeah, we've had, we've had that issue before.
I apologize, but where was the packet tonight? Because I didn't get one. It would be online, it's all emails, you printed yours out? Oh, it was in the package, wasn't it, at the end? Gotcha. I sent brother papers today. Okay.
They canceled out, and that's why.
Okay, I remember seeing now that the, the top of the paper.
I would have known at the beginning of the thing, Susan.
I know, I saw them, I was like, I was gonna reach around Marty, but he was talking so often that I couldn't get over there, so. Plus your, plus your mask is down the whole time, dude, and I was like, come on, well.
You read nothing, I would entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn.